Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Chack.
Present.
Commissioner Opelt.
Attending.
Commissioner Minton.
Here.
Mayor, we have four commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Thank you very much. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any commissioner comments? Does anybody like to talk about, were you at Saturdays?
I was there. I really want to appreciate, or express my appreciation for the staff members that were there. We had all of the department heads and we had lots of folks out with vehicles. And they were there on a Saturday, taking up time on their weekend, so thank you to them for showing up. We did have a decent showing. About twenty or thirty people came in and hopefully learned something good. Twenty-four? Oh, forty-two. Okay, great, the answer. Forty-two, so that's pretty good. Again, yeah, so come out Thursday night if you didn't, weren't able to make it on Saturday. Eisenhower Middle School, yeah, so.
What time?
Five-thirty.
Five to seven.
And I think all four of us should be here. I don't know if John will be back in town, but yeah, love to talk to you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you commissioners. The next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Those are.
Mayor, Mayor, I think we have just general public comment.
Oh, absolutely.
Every one of our legislated.
Public comment. This is not related to any agenda items.
To the consent agenda, yes.
No, that, the comments for the consent agenda come after this.
Okay.
This is items not related to any.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any general comments? None. See none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Which are items of a routine and housekeeping nature, or maybe items which have been previously reviewed by the city commission and may be approved in one motion. We can always move an item off the agenda, the consent agenda, to discuss it. I think there are a lot of people who are here talking about D1, which is the acacia addition plant. So now, we would ask for comments from the public.
Are we asking for public comments on the entire consent agenda?
Yes.
Do we?
I just thought there might be. We had no on the. Yes, the entire consent agenda.
Just from a previous conversation with Commissioner Opelt, I believe there's a desire to pull that item from the consent agenda. Is that accurate, Commissioner Opelt?
I mean, I don't, we can still talk about it. Unfortunately, we don't really have a lot to actually approve outside of what the zoning, or the planning board approved. Statutorily. I think it's, we certainly should discuss it. We really don't have anything else to vote on.
It would be my recommendation just to go ahead and pull that item from the consent agenda, vote on all the other items on the consent agenda, and then open it up to public comment on that particular.
Yeah.
Can we make sure that there are no other items that people want to talk about on the other consent agenda items?
Well, I can move that we pull item D1 from the consent agenda and discuss it after.
Okay, let's see if there are any comments on the consent agenda excepting D1.
Do we need to vote on the motion to pull it from the agenda?
No, I don't think, no.
Okay.
I have a question on another item. At which point should I ask my question?
I think there would be now.
Right now is fine.
A question on another item?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
So my question is on D2, the easements and right-of-ways on the plat for Morgan Katz addition. I read that three times, and I'm still not sure what is being done. I can't tell who the owner of which property is. Can that be clarified?
Yeah, I would invite Community Development Director Peterson to the podium, and I believe we may have those property owners in the audience as well.
So now we're going to discuss D2. We'll come back to D1.
Good evening commissioners. I'll see if I can zoom in a little bit more. So what is being replatted with this final plat? There was an existing right-of-way that followed right here. It was called Joseph Drive. That just deadened at the property that's owned by Mr. Morgan. So what is being, the new lot lines as shown in this plat, it's actually taking this right-of-way and it's dividing it into, into two. And so the northern part of that is going to go to Mr. Driling, to the north side of it. The southern strip right here, we're creating a flag lot, and then the new lot line is, you can kind of see the pins on each of the corners of where that lot line is. That is a new lot that's being created on Mr. Morgan's land.
Can you tell me what a flag lot is?
Sure, a flag lot is where there's just like a, so think about like a flag pole. So the pole of the flag, it connects to right-of-way and it allows you access onto a larger parcel, which this would be kind of the flag, if you will, of it. This would be the pole of that flag lot. So it allows for a property to still have access to right-of-way without having to have a, the larger portion of that tract immediately adjacent to right-of-way.
Has there been, that's currently a dirt track, which I've never seen a vehicle on.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea if either party plans to develop that into a proper roadway?
I do not know that. I do know that Mr. Driling has no desire at this time to develop that Lot 1. And then on Lot 2, this is a barn that was already under construction when it came into the city. To my understanding, the, there is a roadway that'll be constructed, roadway gravel road that'll be constructed for fire access. But at this time, since there is only that one lot, I don't know if they have plans to develop that.
And if I understand correctly, part of this will be, I know that we annexed that, the Morgan property several months ago. Is there a small portion of additional annexation that's taking place?
We already did the annexation, so that, they had to do the annexation and rezoning before they could replat. And so the annexed portion that you just did a couple of months ago, it's basically this polygon right here. Everything else was already in the city.
Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
Sorry, can I just? No, I'll come back to my question.
No.
It, something you just said triggered a question related to D1, so I will hold that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you Stephanie, don't go far. Okay, back to D1.
Do we need to?
Nope.
Let's go ahead and take action on the consent agenda excepting D1.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D1.
Second.
You're moving second? Chelsea, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Adam Chack.
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt.
Yes.
Commissioner Minton.
Yes.
Mayor McCullough.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, we're at D1.
Mayor, before we move on to item D1, I did want to acknowledge that we did have a land donation for parkland, and just a very gracious donation from Mr. Tim and Angie Schultz. And just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to acknowledge that this evening before we started talking about this plat.
Yes, the Schultz's are here. We'd like to thank you very much. Would you like to bring them up or anything, or? No? Okay, the City of Manhattan and I thank you very much.
And I actually live in that neighborhood, and again, thank you for your generosity.
Okay, any other problems before D1? Okay, D1.
Is there any particular place you would like for me to?
I think just, why don't you go over it really quickly to make sure we're all on the same page?
Sure, I will start with just talking about what the plating process is. So plating is a very technical type of action. The MDC, or Manhattan Development Code, not only has zoning in it, it also has our subdivision regulations. Those subdivision regulations provide standards and requirements for any sort of subdivision of property. So anytime that we are creating lots, moving lots, eliminating lot lines, or dedicating easements or rights-of-way. That process, so it first comes to staff, staff does a technical analysis. It's not just community development. We also work with risk reduction, public utilities, public works, and everybody kind of has their own piece that they look at. Then staff will, once we determine that it meets our subdivision regulations, we will send that on to the planning board. The planning board's role in that process is to approve the plat and say, yes, it substantially complies with the regulations. It then comes before the city commission, and your action item, actually it's written there in the agenda item summary, is to accept any easements or rights-of-way. So that is the action that's before you. For this plat, there is no additional right-of-way that is being dedicated. There are two, I could, I believe that there are two easements that are here. One is an access easement, another is a drainage easement. And then there could be some existing utility easements that were already on the, on the previous, this is a replat, so on the previous plat. Sometimes our standards give us requirements for how large easements should be. A lot of times, it's just whatever, whatever's needed, and that's typically dependent on public utilities or public works. So for a drainage easement, that drainage easement is as large as whatever facility or whatever function it's supposed to have. Same way with access easements. Those are determined based on what we're trying to access, what kind of equipment we think we need to get back there. And so those all are vetted through public works or public utilities to make sure it's acceptable for them. There, I do, I'm going to put Rachel on the spot.
Go ahead.
She can probably speak to this more eloquently than I can. There is a component in the MDC that talks about if the commission wanted to deny a plat and what, and how you could go about doing that. And there are very particular instances, or very specific instances in which you can do that, but it's, and Rachel will jump in at any point. It's more of if we just had a gracious donation of a parkland. So if somebody wanted to donate, you know, a parkland, and you don't want to accept that if it was part of a conservation easement, and you don't want to have that conservation easement within the city, it could be a large drainage structure that maybe public works doesn't want to, doesn't want to have to maintain or have responsibility for in the future. You could elect not to accept that easement with that infrastructure in it. What else would you like to add?
I think that you didn't give yourself enough credit, Stephanie. That was very eloquent. That's sort of set forth in a little bit less elaborative form in the MDC. So it says that if you are to refuse any dedications, that you will advise the applicant and the planning board of the reasons for your refusal, and that those reasons must be solely related to the ownership, improvement, maintenance, and use of such dedicated land. So again, it's confined to essentially refusing the, it would be refusing these easements, which are fairly typical sorts of easements that our staff determined were necessary for the plat to be functional as it's laid out. So I think that would be an unusual application of that standard, but that's what the MDC says about your discretion.
Rachel, can you repeat that, please?
Yes, repeat the provision. It says that if the governing body defers or refuses any dedications, it will advise the applicant and the planning board of the reasons for such deferral or refusal. The reasons must be solely related to the ownership, improvement, maintenance, and use of such dedicated land. So I said in their deferral, there's also a provision by which if you, if you were noticing an issue with something that was sought to be dedicated, you could defer your action on this item and point out that you'd like to see revisions to the plat according to that. So I left that out of my original summary because I'm not sure it applies here, but that's the statement. So it's the same standard for a deferral or refusal of the dedication outright.
So it's if we had concerns with like the technical component of the easement or how it was laid out, if there were concerns?
If you had, yes, if you had reasons that were related to some burden of ownership of the easement by the city, some need for imminent improvement, Stephanie mentioned some like infrastructure that might already be there in need of maintenance, that would be an example, and use of such dedicated land. So if it's not something that is of use to the city, those are scenarios where the standard is designed to kind of kick in and give you that ability.
Is this, is this related solely to the easements or to the replat as well?
Solely to the easements and any other dedication, which here is just easements in this instance.
Dedication, that, it sounded like this really only applies when somebody is trying to give the city land. Okay.
Right, that's the scope of the approval by statute and the MDC. For this body is acceptance of easements and dedications of right-of-ways. We don't have right-of-way in this instance. The dedicated land is those easements that Stephanie pointed out.
So, yeah, because I was reading about, I was reading, getting into statutes and stuff like that, and it, when we do like a zoning, the planning board sends us a recommendation, but for a replat, they're the approving body. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so we don't, we're not accepting or denying a recommendation. We just have to accept the easements and rights-of-way.
Correct. Because ultimately, the, not always for easements, but for right-of-way, that is a responsibility that the city, thus the city commission would be taking on financially. So there may be instances where you did not want to accept that right-of-way. In this instance, we do not have any right-of-way being dedicated.
Stephanie, was the planning board unanimous in this decision?
It was. They voted last night six to zero. They also recognized what their role was with the final plat, and that because it conformed to the subdivision regulations, that they, they didn't have a reason to deny that.
Stephanie, can you speak to the apparent confusion to the members of that neighborhood who were under the impression that this was actually rezoning rather than replating?
Yeah, I think a little bit of that confusion was probably caused by some of our team. This is a, and thanks to Rachel, yesterday we had a kind of a late afternoon meeting. When a, when we have a replat, so in this instance, let me zoom out a little bit. Yeah, that's the wrong way. So right now, the zoning line, it basically goes straight down. And Lot 3 is zoned with an overlay. The other two lots are just RL. Lot 3 still retains that underlying zoning district, but so when, when this is replatted, we cannot by a replat extend that overlay to the rest of the property. Otherwise, what would prevent somebody from just going through this process versus going through the rezoning process, which does have those factors of consideration for the governing body. So I think that there was a little bit of a misunderstanding from my team on how we were handling this and what that replating looked like. We did get that squared away yesterday thanks to Rachel's help. So when we do a replat, the zoning will not change. You would actually have to go through a formal action to make any sort of substantial improvements to that property.
Because the zoning follows the property lines.
Oh, the zoning, go ahead, sorry.
Because that now becomes part of Lot 3, not Lot 1 and 2. So what keeps that zoning with Lot 1 and 2?
The Lot 1 and 2 right now, they already have that RL zoning. So when we subdivided this property, I can, when we subdivided this property, everything to the left of basically this line is still RL. The overlay is everything to the right. Just because we add additional, just because they replatted to change their lot lines does not mean that they can modify their zoning. That zoning is done by ordinance, and we have a legal description that goes with it. To modify that, we'd have to come back before you modify that legal description to include this new portion of the land.
Thank you.
So you've just segued into my question.
Sure.
The, I thought that you said that regarding the Morgan Katz property, that that had to be rezoned before it could be replatted.
Yeah, because it didn't have a zoning district. It was recently annexed into the city, and so it had to have a zoning designation. There is a little bit of like a chicken and an egg situation where whether they rezone first or replat first, there's not an ideal way to do that, because either way, the zoning's not going to follow the lot lines. If you're coming in to rezone and then you're going to replat at some point, the lot lines and the zoning districts won't align. And you can't, it would be difficult to do those processes concurrently.
So what can be done on this, the back half of lots 1 and 2 now, like on the new? That has nothing to do with what we're voting on, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so you're not going to probably like my response, but what we've determined is that there could be no substantial improvements to that lot. And that is going to be difficult to try to define tonight. A lot of times, we are more reactionary to, okay, that's too much, or that is out of, you know, that's considered substantial. One of the things that we'll look at is kind of the scale of anything that's happening there. So keeping in mind that lots 1 and 2 are single-family residential, and you know, if, if, I even hesitate to give examples. But if there's a single, a single house that's using their backyard for a purpose, that's different than maybe if there is a fraternity that's using that land for something else. So there may be, I mean, I don't, I don't know what that substantial look like right now, but we will take into consideration the context of that neighborhood.
Sure, that makes sense. And I mean, this is a very unique situation. So I totally get that that's new to everybody.
Yeah.
Okay.
Didn't, we did have sort of the same thing with the Kappa House when they wanted to buy that, the house next to them and.
I can't speak to that. I was not at the city at that time. Jason might remember, or Rachel. I just don't, I don't have history of that.
Would a parking lot be considered a substantial improvement?
It potentially could be, yeah. Depending on what the scale of that is, how, how large it would be in that area. All of those would be factors for us to weigh. Any sort of improvement at this point would be flagged through the building permit process. And that is something, even though it goes through risk reduction, all departments have an opportunity to review those plans. And that's where we would say, you know, hold up, your, the zoning doesn't really allow for this to happen. You need to go through that rezoning process in order to use this more intensely.
Other questions? Then we'd love to have public comment. Love to have public comment on D1.
Good evening commissioners. Bruce McMillan, Baker McMillan Architects, 555 Points Avenue. And the replat that you're addressing this evening has been thoroughly worked through with city staff. We have been working hand in glove with city staff in order to get the ramifications and the parameters of this replat to within the RL zoning district, as well as all other components that we know of at this time for the Acacia fraternity. So I will be glad to stand for any questions, but the planning board did approve this last evening on a six oh vote. And as far as we know at this point, it meets all of the city development code standards that are applicable to this site.
Questions for Bruce?
What's the plan for the new property?
That is under advisement and under discussion.
Seems like a lot of work to not have a plan.
It's a step-by-step process, Commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you Bruce. Would you sign in, please?
Thank you.
Other individuals interested in making a comment?
Abram Mertz, 2020 Hunting Avenue. Born and raised Manhattanite. My wife, Dani, is born and raised in town, and we raise our two girls and son, eight, six, and five, across the street from 2023, 2015, and 2005. So I mean, I think the writing's on the wall. This is an absurd situation we find ourselves in as a neighborhood, where even though we have unanimously as local homeowners established a historical district, we've sort of been outmaneuvered on a technicality, I think, tonight. So and that, those answers reek, like of, this is going to be a bigger problem, long-term. This replat creates an overlay on the right, or the, yeah, on the right. And it creates a landlocked R1 situation on the left. There's no way this doesn't come back to city council, like absolutely no way. It's going to be in the zoning board, which is good for us, because we're going to probably have a chance at winning. But I don't understand why we'd even let ourselves go down the replat, because this is like a thorn in the heel of our foot. I mean, people have asked me what's going on. Acacia's trying to demolish 2015 Hunting at least. Since they purchased it in 2021, they have had the assessed value decrease from 21,000 to 6,000. They're paying $1,200 less in taxes. They're asking you to knock the back half of the square footage off. I live right across from 2023. They're not treating it any better. They have plans, and the plans are to knock everything down, build a bigger house, put up a parking lot. They've told us this at community meetings. I mean, I cannot stress, they have told us this. That's what they're going to try to do. And again, I know we're here on a technicality, so I'll take a shot at maybe what, something I could say to potentially just solicit a no vote. Because at this point, just vote no. Let them go through whatever the next steps are. Put the onus on them as an organization to spend the money with, for having no plan. They have an architect here tonight, and note, zero fraternity members. So this isn't about Acacia, this is about Acacia alumni. The application for replat requests a waiver. Citing it's not feasible for the, to provide the required 16-foot corridor. This is really important. Plans as ridiculous as this should be perfect before they're approved by unanimous six oh vote. The replat's sketchy. We can't rely on a plan with waivers and exceptions. Has to be perfect, airtight, fully compliant. This isn't one. Tonight, as a commission, even though based on what we just heard, doesn't seem logical, just vote no.
Thank you. Would you please sign in?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Other comments?
My name is Beth Bergston, and I live at 2055 Hunting, which is right next door to what we're talking about. And I'm not looking forward to a parking lot or anything that would deal with the easement or assessments. I don't need a, I don't need another outside parking lot or anything that would come out of my back, my side yard. That would be an easement, from what I understand, that if they used another parking lot in a way to get out of that parking lot, it could be my yard, which I'm not looking forward to. I have lived there since I was in third grade, so I have seen the Acacia become an active, busy, busy place. I've also seen Acacia become in very, very small amount of young men living in just the building, just the Acacia building. They have not needed to increase to any direction. I've seen it also, you know, grow. So I can't see that that can, this can be a residential and be Acacia, a back and forth, back and forth. Because who would want to buy that as a residential property if it was already made into a parking lot and something else? So what happens to that property if the Acacia doesn't want it? It would not be resellable as a residential property at all. I know several different groups have been talking about this. Unfortunately, the neighborhood has not been involved in any of this conversation, so we're kind of in the dark. Is not knowing what easements we're talking about, not knowing where, where another exit might come out of, what's going to happen to the front yard, what's going to happen to the backyard. They've also talked about one might be the party house, where they have their parties and things. And I really don't want the tiki torches in my side yard. in my side yard with having to call the fire department during a, you know, no burn issue. So I'm just thinking, there are so many residential issues being next door to this, that I can't see what they're really going to do to make the easements any different than what they are now, or what they can do to the residential for resale, especially, because it would not be a residential home anymore to be resold. And how, what would you do to resell a parking lot?
Thank you.
Those are just my concerns.
Make sure you sign in for me. Thank you.
Ashley Furman, 2000 Hunting Avenue, which is right on the corner of Hunting and Lee, right across from the Acacia fraternity house. I want to echo what Abram said and encourage you to vote no on accepting the easements and right of, rights of way as shown, because the plat fails to provide a code-compliant 16-foot corridor for the storm drainage maintenance access. Getting past that part, I also want to say that during the planning board meeting yesterday, that was a new process for me. And I kept hearing, you know, it's, it's just a replat. It's, it's not a big deal. And what we're requesting might seem like a small technicality tonight that just kicks the can down the road. However, no applicant starts his process without an end use in mind, something that Peter was starting to scratch at, something that Abram just talked about. And those end uses will be disastrous for our neighborhood. Of course, like we've discussed, end uses are not and cannot be the basis for your decision tonight. But I do want to ensure the commission sees through the rigmarole and understands the context surrounding what's really going on here in our neighborhood, because this is the first step in whatever is coming down the pike. Over the past three to four years, Acacia has sown distrust and clearly demonstrated that they do not wish for the long-term prosperity of our tight-knit historic neighborhood. We've organized time and time again to defend the significant investment we all have made, not just in the homes that we love, but in the sense of community that we've developed. Make no mistake, as the applicant moves forward, all of that will be at risk in favor of parking spaces, basketball hoops, or even worse, like tearing down those two homes. For short, for short-term college student residents and out-of-town investors who have essentially stolen two single-family homes from Manhattan residents to set whatever they're planning in place, or in motion, excuse me. From what I've learned, it seems that there's nothing we as a neighborhood ever could have really done to stop the applicants from clearing this replat hurdle, because as long as you check the boxes, it just kind of goes through. But our presence here tonight shows how engaged, dedicated, and concerned we are when it comes to this topic. And it was important to me for the commission to see, for you all to see and hear that tonight, because we'll probably be here again. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other comments? Sure.
Jason Banks, 2008 Hunting, basically directly across from the house. I kind of want to address a couple of elephants in the room. And I think the first elephant that I want to address is, we as a neighborhood don't have a problem with the young men who live there. They're fantastic neighbors. What we have a problem with is, we've worked very hard to protect a, a style of architecture that we find very dear to our hearts, right? And we want to maintain this neighborhood. That is a, it's, it's a very small section of what is that mid-century modern, right? And we want to make sure that, much in the same way that when we look at the Victorian houses, people look at that and think that's a classic style of architecture. And we want to build that in our neighborhood, too. And I know that is not relevant to the situation here. But I want to make sure that we're also aware that this is not a, a problem with the people that live there. It's a problem with where are we going? What's the direction? How can we make sure that we are protecting? What is, people, there are magazines dedicated to the style of house that we own. There are people that walk by our, our neighborhood to look and see these, these interesting houses. And we want to make sure that that is still something that Manhattan can be proud of and not let it, we know what happens when, we know what happens when college gets too big. We know what happens to neighborhoods. They die. And we don't want to see this neighborhood die, because it is significant. It's important. So my comments don't, are not germane to, I, I know, they're not germane to what we're talking about. But again, I think of myself as planting a little bit of seed for a conversation later. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I do think it's important that we realize this is a historic district. And we often think of only downtown and those houses being, you know, but it is a wonderful mid-century architecture district. Seeing no other, oh, go ahead.
Mayor McCullough.
Oh, Bruce has spoken. Sorry, Bruce. Get your one shot.
I need to clarify a question that Commissioner Opel raised as well.
Yeah, other people don't get to talk twice, Bruce?
Well, they do get to answer.
As the applicant, I believe.
They do get to answer Commissioners' questions, though. How are we doing, Rachel?
We, we do, when you're in the, the context of a hearing, your procedure allows for a rebuttal by the applicant. But this isn't really, a plat consideration isn't really a hearing. So I was under the understanding that Bruce spoke as a public commenter within that context, which means your rules are that there's one opportunity to participate in that.
Okay, thank you, Bruce.
Okay, thank you.
So Paul Parish, 522 West Street Drive. I, I think what Bruce wanted to comment on is that currently there is no intent.
Can you, can you speak up a little bit? Speak up a little bit and give us.
Currently, there is no.
Name and address.
Paul Parish, 522 West Street Drive.
Thank you.
Currently, there is no intent to tear down either of the residential homes. I'd also comment on the 12-foot. A typical drive lane is 12-foot, so a vehicle can go down that path. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Paul, sorry, I have a quick follow-up on that. When you're saying 12-foot, are you referencing the 16-foot corridor that was referenced earlier?
Correct.
Sorry, one more, Paul. Is that, that's what this is, is the 12-foot drainage right through the middle?
Between the two.
Easement between the two? That's 12 feet.
So it's, correct.
I'm just going to interject here real quick, Commissioners. There's been some conversation about the existence of that request for a waiver in the application that accompanied the request for the replat. And the applicant provided that. They didn't need to request a waiver, because for that type of easement, there isn't a minimum width within the MDC. It's whatever width is deemed sufficient for the purpose of that easement by the Public Works and Public Utilities Staff. I can probably say something Stephanie could say a little bit more articulately. But I just wanted to point that out, since it's, it's been discussed and I'm not sure, stated outright within this meeting, that that waiver, I think, has created some confusion. But there wasn't a need for a waiver. It was included with the application. It wasn't necessary.
Amber Starling, 408 Houston Street. What I just heard was that currently there is no plan to demolish the housing. But what I heard earlier, and that Peter was able to, to get to, was that conveniently, currently, there is no plan.
Mel? Are you on?
Good evening, Mel Borst. I reside at 1918 Humboldt Street. And I'd like to go back to the previous homeowner's comments about he didn't think it was relevant to consider the historic value of this neighborhood that is, I think, the only local historic district that we have. And it's disturbing that the, all the requirements have been met by the city to approve this replat, not knowing what the ultimate purpose is, and also not consulting with the Historic Resources Board. As we are a certified local government, and they do have responsibility to look after our historic resources, including our local historic districts. So if I look at their responsibilities, they are to advise the planning board and the commission about concerns that they have, or approval that they might have of changes to historic neighborhoods or historic environs, neighborhoods or properties. So I'm, I think that we need to give them more respect for the responsibilities that they have, especially when it comes to our historic resources we have here. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other individuals who'd like to speak. Danielle, could you explain what we, when the planning board votes unanimously to do something, what the possibilities are for the, the commission, and that we can send it back with four votes and this kind of thing?
Mayor, I think you're, you're thinking of a rezoning where we have those, set out those different procedures for the plat. The posture you're in is to either accept or deny the dedication of the easements that are shown on this plat. So you aren't, the decision of the planning board was already made and is final. They have a different review than you have. So the options are to accept or deny the dedication of the easements on the plat.
Okay. I hear a motion to accept or deny. Go ahead.
Can I ask a question of Stephanie real quick? Stephanie, I, we heard a few references of, although we're talking about a replat, but the why we're doing it and trying to get to this, like wanting to demolish these buildings as the property owners, what, they would have to go through Historic Resources Board to do anything to those properties.
Correct.
Correct.
So HRB, because this is a technical issue, and you're accepting easements in right-of-way, the HRB has no role in moving lot lines. What they would have a say in is any sort of improvements made to that site, whether there's a demolition permit that's being sought, if there's any sort of new structures, if there is an addition to buildings. They, that's when we, when there's a physical change to the environment, that's when the HRB becomes involved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if we deny the dedication of these easements and rights of way, we then no longer have the authority to enter that property for maintenance purposes, anything like that, right? So we would kind of, yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Want to make a motion to approve or disapprove?
I mean, I just want to say, I appreciate the conversation tonight. I think it's maybe a little early, but I think it's getting everyone talking and hoping that the applicant then is responsive. And, and we know that there are steps from neighborhood meetings and those things. I also want to point out, and I'll just throw this out there, that the property owners of this property, these properties also have rights. And so where I'm at with it, just is the, the property owner has the right, and there's not the foundation, I feel like, to overturn that, clarifying the 16-inch, or 16-foot corridor and stuff. I do think it was a great discussion. I appreciate everyone coming out. But with that, I'll move that we approve D1.
Easement. Easement?
Yeah, yeah, the, as it's listed as D1. Do you want me to say it all? Okay.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Two seconds. Okay, Chelsea, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Trach?
I'd like to recuse myself. My family has, excuse me, my family has owned property on Hunting. And I prefer not to take.
Motion carries three to zero to one.
Okay. We'll move on to the general agenda. We have, item A has been taken off. We'll move to item B, which is to consider master services agreement with utility billing software with SpryPoint.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, my name is Jared Wassinger. I'm an Assistant City Manager with the city. We've been doing quite a few overhauls to some of our legacy systems over the past couple of years, and this is another one that we're talking with you about tonight. Just a little background, dating back to our strategic plan and goal number one, creating a well-run city organization for our community, and modernization was really at the focal point of that goal, modernizing our technology, software, and systems. Back in 2021, we entered into an agreement with the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, to help us procure new systems and softwares, overarching ones with the organization, the ERP, Enterprise Resource Planning System, our financial backbone of the organization. I'm so proud to say, after that 13-month implementation project, we are live with Oracle. And again, just kudos to our finance department, Rena Neal and her leadership, and everyone across our organization who'd been working tirelessly with that effort. Couple months ago, we kicked off our licensing and permitting software implementation, also with Oracle, Oracle Permitting and Licensing called Opal. Plan is to go live with that next summer, so that's in progress. And then we also worked with GFOA on procurement for a new utility billing system. And potentially, if, if this contract goes through tonight, you could be looking at a fall, go live for that, another 12-month implementation process. Asset management, just to throw out there, is another thing that we're always looking at, a citywide asset management system that could be part of our future decisions as well. So currently, we have Central Square. They were the previous provider of our ERP as well, our green screen, I-series technology that some of you are familiar with. They also provide our utility billing software. Just a little background on the cost of their, we're paying about 70 grand a year to Central Square for all of their solutions. So that includes ERP, utility billing, and a small fleet module that our fleet staff is able to track, the lifecycle and costs associated with our fleet. So utility billing is a piece of that. In 2021, Central Square basically withdrew the support of their customer portal, Click2Gov. So there was really no way for us to service the customer. We were able to do utility billing continually in Central Square on the backend and process utility bills, but there was no way to communicate those bills and get those payments with our customers. We utilized Paymentis, which is really just the third-party payment provider. You know, they're the one who are processing the credit card or bank fees. They're that third party that really just facilitates that. But they were able to step in, once we kind of lost that support of our customer portal with Click2Gov, and they were able to kind of create a makeshift online payment, you know, login for people to continue to pay their bills monthly, login, have a saved credit card, or a, a bank draft, or something like that. But there was really no information in that system for our customers. All, altogether, Central Square, we're just losing support with this legacy system over time. Central Square brings a lot of manual processes to the work that our customer service staff do today. This is to the point where we have to restart part of our system every day, and it takes a while just to get that up and running. It takes almost four to six hours to process billing, the billing cycle every week when we're, because we bill those out in chunks every other week. We have three billing cycles a, a month. And then, of course, it's just not really conducive to any changes, and it's hard to integrate with our, our newer systems like Oracle.
Jared, sir, will Central Square go away, or will we keep it for fleet management?
We are looking to move away in 2026 from Central Square altogether, including fleet management. Yep. So that, that annual contract renews next summer, July 2026. So we would expect that we would no longer be utilizing Central Square at all.
And that was, we pay what, how much?
Seventy thousand dollars a year, for all those modules. This is just a classic couple screenshots of the technology we're working with. A lot of function keys. It's very difficult for our, our staff to, to navigate this system, dive into a specific customer, look at their bill, look at past usage. The reporting is not really great as well. Paymentis, this is just some screen grabs of what they've been able to spin up for us to create a customer portal for the individual, to have an account, login, view their current bill. It's pretty difficult to view past bills. One of the things, too, when we, when we moved away from Click2Gov and it was no longer available, we heard a lot of pushback from our customers, and still do today. There is no email with a bill attached. Usually, you can get an attachment and an outline of what your bill is, the usage rates. In order for us to give a customer a PDF of the. In order for us to give a customer a PDF of their bill, we would need to print it and scan it and email it to them. That's ridiculous, right? So, we're, we're trying to automate a lot of these systems. And it's just, even from a historical perspective, it's really hard for a customer to go back in and see that usage that, that they're having. So, we worked with GFOA on a selection process to procure a new utility billing and customer service system. Through GFOA, they identified over fifteen vendors. There, there's a lot of utility billing solutions out there, by the way. We contacted fifteen of them. Eight of them responded that they would be, we put together a list of requirements, much like we did with licensing and permitting, and, and with our ERP of, you know, these are the things we're looking for in a system, and we needed to be able to do these functions. So, eight of them saw those requirements and responded, saying that they were interested. We had a group of city staff across finance, public utilities, public works, IT, and city manager's office, looking at those vendors, and we narrowed it down to five that we thought were promising. So, we held just product demonstrations with them virtually. And then, we narrowed that list down to two finalists and did half-day demos to really understand the system and what its capabilities are for staff and for the customer. We settled on SpryPoint, a very promising solution. The, just the functionality of the system was one of the things that really stood out among all the other solutions, not only for the staff, but what the customer is going to see and what they're gonna have access to. So, this is kind of a list of the solutions that SpryPoint provides. Obviously, the overarching system is a customer information billing system. That's really what we're replacing with Central Square. They're offering a customer portal. The, the IDM interval, interval data management application is really the integration between their system and a Clara, which is our meters that are, are going to monitor consumption. And that integration will be real-time, so that our staff, field staff can know, have those up-to-date readings of the usage. And then, there's a mobile application, which is great, too. Right now, if there's a, a service order or a work order, you know, you have an individual calling, saying they may have an issue. Our customer service is then calling or emailing our field staff. They're getting that notification, then they're going out to the field. They maybe fix something or update that work order, which means they have to email or call back our customer service department, so that they can update the records in Central Square. Very time-consuming, laborious process. BryMobile integrates with that. So, if customer service generates a work order, it automatically goes to our team and our field staff. If there are ten work orders in a day, it's gonna actually auto-generate the schedule, so that they're not driving all over the community, and they'll put it in order for them. That's a really cool thing. And then, when they update those field service work order tickets, those will update in real-time. So, very cool solution there. This is a couple screenshots SpryPoint provided. We're obviously gonna make this a little bit more City Manhattan-focused, but, you know, you'll be able to submit your account, create your account with an email, phone number. You know, creating your account number, you'll be able to sign up for different notification and alerts related to your bill. A lot more information just about your account, the details of your account, the history of your payments. This is another shot of an example person, Mark Woodward, who's logging into their actual account, and they can see their water consumption profile and, and past usage and all those things.
Not mine, I hope.
Nope. This is a little backend dashboard. SpryPoint has over a hundred different reporting types for city staff to be able to create customizable dashboards on usage, not in the community, in sections of the community. This is something that's gonna integrate with our mapping and ESRI data system. So, a lot of cool ways for us to communicate to you and to the public, water usage and rates. And then, this is again, you know, a phone call comes into City Hall, or we're, we're looking at a specific client who's calling, asking about their usage. This is a lot better than the green screen that we were looking at, where someone's able to dive into that individual, see the location of where they are, look at past usage, look at what type of meter they have when it was installed. All those things are going to be there for, for our customer service staff to be able to much more easily answer questions for the community. Another really cool thing, I don't have a screenshot of it, but this is obviously, like I mentioned, integrated with our, our mapping system and our utility infrastructure. Right now, if you're a client of Evergy or Kansas Gas, and something goes wrong, you get notified right away on your phone. You're either gonna get an email or a text. The cool thing about SpryPoint is, we'll go into this map, and we will know that a water main break occurred, right? So, there's gonna be low water consumption or availability in an area. We're gonna take a little tool and draw a circle around an area. And then, we're gonna say, send out a notice to those individuals that there, something happened, and all those specifics in real-time. Right now, we're making a post on Facebook or something and hoping someone sees it. We have no other way to communicate.
So, this counts, this would obviously work for, like, boil water. I mean, if it's like, if our plant goes down for some reason.
Emergency and, and more non-emergent things. We, we would be able to draw that circle and, and communicate to all of those, those residents in those areas, which is pretty huge.
Heard that recently, that like, we don't have a way to communicate with our, with our water customers. And I think that's really, really important.
So, really neat functionality there. I have a breakdown of the, just the cost. This is a twelve-month implementation project. So, there is a one-time fee related to the implementation of a little over five hundred thousand dollars. We did include in it, in addition to the five hundred thousand dollars, a not-to-exceed amount of sixty thousand dollars to bring SpryPoint on-site for various stages of the implementation. We did that with the ERP, which we thought was very beneficial. It's really hard to do these fully remote, and we've, we've been doing it a few times with the licensing and permitting, which has also been very beneficial. So, that, that is something we're advocating for. And then, there is the annual cost of the software, and that's based on the number of customers that we do have. So, a hundred thousand dollars annually for the software. And the proposed payment for this is out of cash, split between the three special revenue funds that will be, that people will be paying into the system. Happy to answer. Any questions?
No, I just, I think this is really good. Thanks for doing the work to do the evaluations and all that stuff and, and doing a presentation. It's good, good software. It's, it's also a good example of how cheap is not always best, because the cheapest solution is to do nothing. But we are not able to deliver quality service to our neighbors this way, and this is gonna be an extra cost. But the improvement of service that we're gonna be able to deliver, I think, is, is well worth the additional cost.
Ditto. Okay. Jared, Commissioner Butler set up a thing where you could, you know, top off your, your water bill. Do we still have that?
That, that functionality, we do still have that, and that functionality we'd be capable with this system, too.
Okay, yeah, it was kind of nice, because that went, you know, people wanted to do that. Okay, do I hear a motion to, or do we hear? Couple, I don't think, public comment? Okay.
I move that we approve the master subscription agreement with SpryPoint Services, Inc. for a utility billing software.
Second.
And second, Chelsea, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Trach?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay.
Move we adjourn the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five city commission meeting.
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.